Hello, anybody over there listening? I am Corporal Sam Home with the High Level RCMP.
I'm Corporal Jason Barber, also High Level RCMP.
And we just wanted to have a town call tonight via the Facebook Live link from the town to answer any questions and present a little bit of information on what we do here in High Level. A lot of people see us around, but they don't obviously know all of the ins and outs about it. Just wanted to give it, give some background information, some of the projects that we've been working on lately, and also open up the floor to any questions, anybody has, anybody concerns, anything like that. If we're unable to address everything tonight, we'd certainly be happy to take anything down and get back to you over the next day or two. So I'll just start with saying some background information on the detachment here at High Level. So we have a fairly large detachment. We've got approximately twenty members, which includes one staff sergeant who is our commander, and then underneath him is one sergeant, which is his second-in-command or operations officer. Then we have three supervisors, myself, Corporal Barber, and Corporal Dan Mills. And then in addition to that, we have approximately fifteen constables. The only specialized section we have stationed here with us in High Level is a PDS or Police Dog Service. So we do have a Police Service Dog or Police Dog Service Unit here in High Level. He services a large area though, so sometimes he's in and out. He heads south quite often, but we certainly do make use of him here whenever we need him. That's pretty much the breakdown of our detachment. Anything to add, Jason?
Not too much. We do service the outside communities, Meander River, First Nation, Wishy River, First Nation, Child Lake, First Nation, and Paddle Prairie, Maiti Settlement. So we do, and Paddle Prairie, Maiti Settlement, we do have, one of our members is in enhanced position, and he has a, goes down and controls the area as much as he can and works with the community on any concerns that they have.
A couple of different things we've had going on recently in the office. Obviously, we're under some health and safety protocols, same as the rest of the world right now, trying to adapt as best we can as things come up, trying to plan for the future. You see our members out there obviously in masks. The type of mask depends on severity of the situation, what's going on there right now. We try and keep everything, we're very, very aware that we're an essential service, and we try and keep, make sure everything's always gonna have wheels on the ground. Recent activities that we've had in the Town of High Level, we had a fairly significant drug bust in October.
And September.
And September. We've brought a couple of really interesting projects, trying to get to the head of the snake, so to speak, try and get as high as we can on the drug ladder so that we can take out the higher positions, and then that tends to deflate everything underneath them. So there's been some really good work done here. We've had some specialized sections, including undercover operations come up, and pull off some pretty cool investigations. And it's always interesting, especially where we tend to be with more of a junior detachment. It's always interesting for them to come up and do their thing, and then for our young constables or young members to try and get some exposure to it and see what happens out there. Based on our proximity to, or not proximity, how far we are from most resources, we tend to do things a little bit on our own, more than some of the larger detachments, more centralized. That's both good and bad. It's certainly a bigger plus that a lot of our junior members here, if we have a file of some significance or a larger file, they get an opportunity to be much more involved in here. They get a great deal of experience, and obviously, everything is overseen really well by myself, Corporal Barber, Corporal Mills, so there's never a question of quality. It's just a matter of exposure for our young members at that point. Couple other initiatives we've had on the go. This summer, we had some enhanced patrols through partnership through the Town of High Level. So those were Thursday, Friday, Saturdays?
Fridays, Saturdays mostly.
Friday, Saturday mostly. Two members coming in and just being dedicated to the downtown core, making sure everybody was, mostly open liquor tickets or open liquor enforcement, public intoxication enforcement, just making sure that everyone is being safe as possible and not causing any problems was our big thing. We found that to be really successful. We had good reception in the parks. Everybody seemed happy to see us out and doing some foot patrols in the parks and making sure everything was happy. I know I was at the park several times with my kids when that enhanced position came through, or the, I guess it's not enhanced position, just
Extra patrols.
extra patrols came through, and it was nice to have, nice to see the members out in there, dedicated members to foot patrols and to the downtown core, just ensuring safety and all of that. It's not always easy for us to do that depending on what's happening unless we can actually set somebody aside. Some of our calls that we get tend to eat up a lot of our resources for a short period of time. So that's the nature of the business. We just don't know exactly what each day is gonna come at us with. So that's about it for now. I think the, it's been an interesting working in High Level. This is my fifth detachment that I've worked in. This is the largest detachment I've worked in. And it's the first detachment where I've had senior members from outside of the area contacting us and asking about moving to High Level and saying that they've heard positive things about the town. They've heard positive things about the work, and they've heard positive things about the office. The Town of High Level's website is excellent. I know a lot of the members who are moving here are able to check that out and see what the amenities are. I know I myself am involved with the Family Resource Centre, and really, really amazing opportunities there for children and for different activities. A lot of our members are involved in the faith community in town. They see it's a very welcoming community as well, and they really like the fact that just the town is so open and so welcoming, and it's amazing for children. It's amazing for everybody. So obviously, thank you from all of us to the town and the residents and all of the outlying areas, because it's been a, it's always a real pleasure to go into work, and it's a real pleasure to work here.
Now, I've been here about three years. This is my third post. Came up for a promotion to Corporal and enjoy working with the younger members and helping supervise and give them direction and guidance. It's been a really great detachment, great community. We enjoy all the amenities that the community has to offer. So it's been, been good, and I've been involved with refereeing, refereeing in the minor hockey games during winter. So just keeping involved in the community is kind of something that I can offer.
And it's not, a lot of us were around during the fires. We were part of the evacuation. Our families were part of the evacuation. And then a lot of us did stick around and help out with the emergency management side of it. So what we're seeing now is some of the members who have been here for a while and who have been, especially through that fire situation, they've really grown close to the town. They've really grown close, close to their neighbors, and there tends to be a lot of tears now when we do unfortunately have to move after between three to five years. So it's been, it's a great place, but
Kind of a hidden gem in the north.
Yeah, it absolutely is the hidden gem of the, of the north. The hospital's been excellent. We've had no problems with anything. Members are always happy to come into work, always happy to stick around. We've had a record number of our local officers putting in for, asking for extensions over the last three years.
Yep.
So that's a, that reflects extremely positively on the town. And are there anybody out there with any questions, comments, or concerns that they would like to bring up to us? No? I will just touch base. I know that our commanding officer, Curtis Dublocke, wanted us to just touch base, and he's been asked repeatedly about the possibility of the Alberta Provincial Police. And our message is resoundingly, we will continue to provide the high level of service that I think everybody kind of expects from us. And if we can, if anything like that would be out of our hands, but we'll certainly see what comes up. And if anything does, we will, we'll take it on then. But there would be absolutely no issues of interruption in service or degradation. That would be a different topic for a different day, so. So we have a question from Facebook. Mary Rose asks, "Who does patrolling now for speeding vehicles around town, most especially as around school? Because we know there is no peace officer now." So our members are dedicated to going out and targeting school zones. We usually go out two or three times a week in the mornings. A lot of us are out as well, picking up our own children from school, so we kind of see what's happening and where the, if there's problems, we're some of the first people to see it. But Mary, if you have a specific time or a specific zone that you feel is more dangerous or that you've seen some concerning incidents on, by all means, let our office know, and we will make sure that we tackle it. It might have been something that we haven't seen right away. And we'll make sure that we have some members out there and we can do some speeding enforcement.
And a couple of times a year, we also have the Peace River Traffic Session, Section comes up, and they patrol for several days during the week. Generally, they come up more slowly in the summer, do a lot of highway enforcement.
One of the other things I'll just address real quick is even as recently as today and yesterday, sometimes things come up on social media that you'll see on Facebook, and there'll be a lot of Facebook issues or things will start to snowball if somebody hears something or somebody makes a comment. And we always welcome you in those circumstances to call our office, and we can certainly clear things up very, very quickly. There's been a couple incidents that I've been involved in where we heard about things happening through Facebook. And once we started digging into it and trying to get to the kernel, try and peel away the layers of the Facebook comments, and we get to the final kernel that started things, and it was absolutely nothing to it. And it was not, not nearly as big a problem, or there was no problem whatsoever. So a lot of that, I would recommend before, if you read something concerning on Facebook, by all means, contact our office and ask for clarification, because we can provide that very quickly. We're not able to go onto Facebook as an organization and comment on things because we don't have a High Level Facebook page. Because we're a Government of Canada organization, that's actually quite the process to try and set up. But again, we can address anything quickly at the detachment level. Anything else you can think of, Jason?
I don't remember. It's been fairly quiet the last little bit here, especially with Christmas and the cold weather. So we haven't had a whole lot going on, just day-to-day things.
Yeah. Just real quick, a question about how COVID is affecting policing. It's been a challenge for us as well as everybody else. Our biggest concern within our office is trying to keep our numbers up, because we're obviously an essential service. We don't want everybody getting sick at the same time or going off and then having to, if that does happen on the unlikely incident, we do have extra resources that can come in. There are resources being held back at the provincial level that we can bring in. A lot of non-operational members right now are working from home and are able to activate into those roles if we need them. So there's been some of that. It's been different for us. We've done a lot more interviews, taking witness statements over the phone. There's been a little bit less direct contact with people, which I know we find hard, because obviously you're not getting that human connection into the problems that come in. It's a little bit disjointed on the telephone, unfortunately, but that's the way of the world. I will say that I am probably one of the most COVID-cautious people out there, and I know that if anyone from our detachment was listening, they'd probably give that a chuckle. But I've been extremely impressed with our detachment, impressed with our detachment. The members from the top down have taken things very seriously. They've taken direction extremely well. Our safety guidelines change fairly often, and they're always, there's nobody in our office that's hesitant for those changes. Everybody embraces them very quickly, and we are able to stay on top of things as best we can as the information comes into us. So that's about it.
What about challenges with distances and weather up here in the north? Just from a policing side, it gets a little harder for us to get our members trained sometimes. Lately, we've been able to do some of our training virtually, which has been a bonus. Sam and I were just on a course in December for learning about finances within the RCMP. The other members are taking some training now for the Traffic Safety Act with regards to ticketing and violation tickets and the new processes that the Alberta government is taking. So that's ongoing this week. We've also had members getting trained within the Child Advocacy Centre and becoming better interviewers and trained interviewers to train, to interview children with any issues or files that come to our, to our knowledge that are reported to us. And we have, we do have the High Level Child Advocacy Centre here in town, just in the Fowler Building by the post office. It's open for the other detachments in the area, including Fort Vermilion, Fox Lake, and Chateauneuf. And we have several interviewers from each detachment that are able to come in and work with the children and help us to investigate these files.
Somebody asked about some of our biggest files and cases from 2021. I'm trying to think. And we had the undercover drug operation, and then we had the drug bust at one of the local hotels where there were people dealing from a hotel room that we were able to complete an investigation, including a search warrant, and had an adrenaline rush of busting into the hotel room and making sure that the arrests were done safely and quickly and that the evidence wasn't destroyed. And we had several, I think we had six individuals charged in that investigation. There's been a couple larger persons crimes. We've had unfortunately a little, several files where people have been assaulted with weapons, and people have been caused grave injury. Obviously, I can't comment on individual files, but I will say that those files, when they come in, are treated with the absolute utmost urgency and severity, and that there is absolutely no resource that we could use that we do not place, or put into place right away. Recently, even this weekend, we had a large file come into the office, and I would say within an hour, we were ready to have an extra twenty individuals in town that specialized services, helping us out with it and doing what we needed to do. So fortunately, the end result of that one turned out to be not as severe as we were initially reported, but it's not an issue for us to try and get those things here when we need them. We've had several things over the last, since I got here in 2018. There's been several larger files where we've had individuals with weapons in the community or in the area that we've had to employ our emergency response team. And they've been able to fly in very extremely quickly from different places, Calgary, Edmonton, and Yellowknife. There was one night that we made use of the Town of High Level Fire Department. Fire Chief Rodney Smith contacted us and gave use of some of their vehicles as far as their transportation and stuff. Again, goes to show what an amazing town High Level is and the bonds that we have and the relationships we've built here. And those things can come in and they can, they're certainly there for use when we need them. But fortunately, here in High Level, that does tend to be pretty rare. We've been asked, so Pam asked, "I'm new to High Level. Thank you for this meeting. How often do you do this?" This is our first time ever, so excuse myself and Jason if you find us a little bit stunted. This is our first time ever. We are planning on doing another one in two months' time roughly. This was kind of a trial run for us. It's been a lot of fun, and hopefully, we get some information out there. And we'll, I know that everybody's mind's not on this, obviously, right now. This is the primary thing in the media and everything is obviously the pandemic. But we did want to give some opportunity for people out there to fully send in concerns or comments they have and to get some of our information out as well. Hopefully, by March, when we run a second one, what things will have gone down and we'll be able to get back on. We'll be able to get back to some sort of, some semblance of normalcy would be nice.
Getting able to interact with schools as well would be important, how did the community look there?
Now, some of our members have done these types of presentations through schools, whereas we used to be able to go into schools and speak to things about bullying or about cyber, cyberbullying or cybercrime. It was a lot of, it was much better. Obviously, we were able to go person and talk to kids and have the students be able to come up to us afterwards and have one-on-one discussions, but we have been able to do some of those presentations virtually. If you're a teacher or principal out there, reach out to your resource officer. They can set things like that up. We do have some rudimentary equipment in our office that we can do some presentations that way.
We have another question from Marissa. It says, "You mentioned that the High Level detachment does not have a Facebook page. Many jurisdictions have some form of social media to keep the town current on events, et cetera. How does the High Level detachment relay information to the citizens to keep them up to date or informed of events?" Generally, we will talk to the, if something comes up in the local newspaper has a question, we'll try and work with them on the stories that are coming out. We do have Sam, who's a media officer, as well as Constable Mayu, who just got, recently got the training. We have done some ad spots on the Peace River Radio. They called about, last month, about locking up your vehicles and keeping your vehicles safe during Christmas, especially with the cold weather, keeping your vehicles idling. So we have used those forms up here. I don't know if there's anything down the road where we can use social media.
I think it's a, again, where we're the Government of Canada, there is a little bit of a process in trying to set something up. We have to be compliant with the Official Languages Act as well. But anything urgent or anything that we feel like we need to get out right away, we've been, we've got a great relationship with the Town of High Levels, the media representatives as well, obviously, who are helping us pull this off now. So we've been able to, or we certainly feel that we're free to contact them with any urgent information that we need to get disseminated, and we can ask for them to put it out on our behalf at that point. Cherry asks, "Is there a domestic violence counselor or social worker employer connected to the High Level RCMP?" There has been in the past, and there's some positions and some framework in place. I believe that program right now is, with the COVID, everything that's going on, it tends to be coordinated through our victim services, and right now, everything's kind of slowed down in that area. We weren't more active with it, though.
I think the funding for the position was cut recently, so
Okay.
it's run through our Policing Society, and right now, there isn't a position that's fully employed right now. Troy asks, "What are we doing with the flow of drugs through the town?" Generally, we rely on information from the public. It doesn't have to be, it can be anonymous. We can use source, sources is what we call them, or confidential informants who give us information. We do work with other drug sections within the province as well, trying to get information from them and see if there's some main players that are coming through at High Level. We also speak to the communities up in the Northwest Territories. Some of the drugs run from Edmonton all the way up to N W T. So we do have a connection there as well with the sections up there.
Yeah, we're in fairly constant contact with the detachment. South of us is the highway runs through, so Manning and Peace River, and then all the way up through with Hay River Detachment, and then all the way up into the Yellowknife where the G Division Federal Unorganized Crime or the drug, the unit that handles drug trade up there, they're aware that we're here, and we've got a really good relationship with them. Sometimes they'll come down if there's a target that they're looking for, and we're collaboratively with them to try and identify anything and try and help out in any way we can. So we also do have two members at our office who are dedicated just to, we call it our crime reduction unit, so they target our high-profile offenders or repeat offenders most often, and a lot of times, that does take them into control drugs and substances investigations. So it tends to be their specialty, area of specialty. But any information that anybody has out there, if they don't want to talk to us directly, if they'd rather leave a tip in honestly, I strongly recommend to contact Crime Stoppers. The information can be found very, very quickly on the internet, and those Crime Stoppers tips, once you make a Crime Stoppers tip, that information does get forwarded to us as supervisors right away as well as any relevant section. So those, those tips do help us out a lot and do often point us in the right direction on where we should be focusing our resources.
Next question is, "Are there specific Next question is, are there specific types of drugs you see more than others? Uh, basically cocaine, crack cocaine have been the main ones that we've been seeing come through the office. Um, small amounts when the, when a user has them. Uh, some of the the warrants that we've received have given us a significant amount. Um, we have been seeing a little bit more crystal meth use in uh some of our people that we're dealing with on a daily basis. And it leads to a little bit more difficult situation dealing with them when they're coming down off the drugs. So we have seen those things coming through.
I know, speaking with our partner agencies, there's been some um an increase in people having native reactions to the recreational drugs that they're taking, either they're taking too much or there's something in it that they're not used to. Or there's some sort of uh poly or multiple drug use there that they're causing some bad reaction. So there has been some increase in um some medical emergencies surrounding drug use as well. That's happened over the last two to three months, but hopefully we're able to uh, we haven't come across anything on the enforcement side. That's been more of a partner agency thing, so. And if anyone has any further questions after this or any further concerns, the Facebook link has our office email address there. You can forward something to that address anytime. It's checked during the week. It's obviously not a twenty-four hour uh reporting tool, but we do, our district assistants do check that on weekdays during regular hours. And if you have anything that comes in through there, we can certainly sign it to a member or deal with it ourselves at that time and get back to anybody who needs. And again, we will be doing something like this again, very similar. We're hoping for before the end of March, probably the, within the last two weeks of March and just try and keep this um connection to the community open.
What is the best thing about working in High Level? Um, I'm just thinking back to when I first came up here to uh check the community out. Realized there was a Boston Pizza, Canadian Tire, Tim Hortons, of course. And uh, but uh just being in the town for three years, just seeing how everyone can work together. Community comes together for big events like minor hockey, lots of families involved in that. And when, if you get out to see some of the games, you can uh have a little more contact with people in the community. Um, there's great amenities, we've got the water park and great uh basketball court, tennis court, uh ball diamonds, and there's lots for kids and families to do when they, when you do move up here.
Yeah, it's, I echoed what Jason said, just say that it's a very positive town. Um, our office has a very good reputation for being welcoming and positive office and detachment. Um, before the pandemic hit, when never any member was uh transferring up, the first thing we did was that the entire office would take them out for dinner with them and their families and all of our families would show up as well and just introduce everybody. The schools have been excellent at uh receiving the kids that come in. And I know my kids came in halfway through a school year and they had an amazing experience and uh we're sorry to be going eventually, but we'll try and dig our heels in as long as we can as well. But the town has a very positive energy. The town seems to uh really embrace us and the members I know all really enjoy working here. We'll give it a couple of minutes for any other questions to come in. I don't know if I have.
Anything else to add?
Anything else to add? Town's been excellent about, it's been a couple of times where local people have, if one of our trucks gets stuck in the snow and some people have popped us out.
Yeah.
I know we've had some, uh, that's happened a couple of times now where we've missed a ditch in Meander or missed a ditch in Bushy and the first pickup truck driving past gets out and has a chuckle and helps us out right away. And that's always a a major uh bonus for us. Um, just again, shows how friendly everybody in the area is and how positive the support is, so. It works out really well.
I've got a question from Katie. It has to be really hard coming in, getting comfortable and then having to uproot again. Will there be options for permanent positions? Uh, generally speaking, most communities that we've been to, it's been a three to five-year post. My longest one uh was down south in Turner Valley where it was about eight years. Our kids are in schools. We opted to stay there a little longer and our sergeant was okay with that at that time. But moving up here, I mean, people, members have been staying for four years. Um, I think after, after a bit of time here, some members are ready to move just to get a different change of scenery from dealing with some of the same people over and over. So it's, it's a way to keep us fresh and uh engage in the communities. Unfortunately, we do have to move. But we do have one member that's been there six years, Corporal Mills, so he's uh.
It's not impossible to do, it just can be a little difficult.
Yeah, and it's something that we work with our staffing person to see if that's the best thing for us and for our family and for the job. So yeah, if someone's really enjoying the community, I'm sure they would ask to stay longer.
Yeah, I'm currently on an extension now, so I was due out already. My time to be officially due out has already passed and I asked for an extension and that was granted, so. I'm here, I've overstayed my welcome, but I'll keep staying as long as I can, so.
Yeah, and technically I'm due on February twenty-sixth, but uh if, if there's no options out there for me, I'm gonna end up asking for an extension as well.
But it would be interesting to see if there would be any appetite for permanent positions. I don't know that that's not something that organizationally we've done in the past, but maybe it's time.
Hmm, you see it more often in the bigger centers too, like Edmonton and Calgary. Members have, haven't moved.
Yeah. It's harder here as well because in some of the larger areas, you're able to work, say, um, you live in St. Albert with your family and then you're able to work in Morendville or in Spruce Grove or in St. Albert detachment. You can go to do your moves within the RCP organization, but remain at the same primary residence. Whereas here, in these smaller communities, unfortunately, where you are is where you work, so. You're not able to uh reach out from there, but I certainly uh certainly can feel that question. So any other questions that anybody else has? Again, feel free to let us know with an attachment email address or save them for March. Um, we're, uh, this has been a positive experience for me. Uh, I can't speak on Jason's behalf, but I know he do, does enjoy these kind of things, so. Um, it's something that I'd certainly look forward to doing again and getting the word out and making sure that we've got some good engagement and the questions tonight have been excellent and we're more than happy to address them.
Hmm.
So thank you very much.
It's been a good night and uh hopefully we hear from more people, either on our uh email address and again in March when we, when we're back. So have a good night, stay safe, take care.
And thank you.